Okay, Mr. McCarthy?
Seventeenth work session, all members present.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for attending the work session. This morning, we have site plans, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Hans, would you come up, please?
Good morning. Peter Hans, Assistant Planning Director, Planning Department. Today, we have four site plans for the board to consider, acting as the Board of Site Plan Review this afternoon. The first one, you know, is Jay Nazaro, 711 on Smithtown Boulevard. This is the southeast corner of Smithtown Boulevard and Nichols Road in Niskunsit. And this was formerly the Capital One Bank. Before that, I believe it was Sunrise Federal Credit. This is a change of use from a bank to a convenience store, including an 890-square-foot demolition of the existing, basically a third of the structure, with a new 263-square-foot addition in site work. We're recommending approval with eight conditions that the applicant has agreed to. This application went to the Board of Zoning Appeals as well. However, that was just for some retaining walls that are existing. I don't know if you want me to go through the conditions, or it's been before Suffolk County DPW.
And that's for the county road, right?
That's for the county road as well.
It's gone through them?
It has. Our traffic safety director's here as well. He's been in conversation with the County DPW, and they're on the same page. I'll go through the conditions. The first is that they obtain applicable permits from the Building Department. The second, that they obtain a road opening permit from our Highway Department. The third, that they obtain a highway work permit from Suffolk County DPW for any improvements necessary along Smithtown Boulevard. The fourth is that the ground sign be of a monument style that does not exceed eight feet in height. That's to match the other two corners that are there. Additional landscaping be provided to assist in buffering some of the newer homes on Liberty Avenue. Six, pavement markings and signage on Nichols Road be installed to the satisfaction of the Traffic Safety Department. In addition, the applicant shall provide that the department with the accident history report. The traffic safety director did receive that report, so his conditions are a little dated. Seven, drainage catch basins installed, conform to the Engineering Department's details, and that the driveway apron on Nichols Road be replaced with a DOT type III driveway apron approved by the town. Again, we're recommending approval. Any questions about the site plan?
Mr. Crowley, I know you're here. You've done some design work on Nichols Road, on our roads, as far as entering and exiting, correct?
Yeah. We'll have them adjust the pavement markings to move the W L O R a little bit so that southbound cars can get by a car waiting to turn left into the site, as well as putting a gridlock box at that ingress and egress to keep that intersection open.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No.
Good. Mr. Peter?
Okay.
Peter, there's gonna be a 711.
There's gonna be a 711. They're relocating from across the street.
Oh.
They're currently in, yeah, they're currently in the building with Kelly's Wings, opposite Ace and CBS.
Yeah.
So it's a relocation. It's not another 711. But I don't know what's going on in that space. It'll be vacated. The next application, it's the backside here. It's a significant building. It's a, oh, pardon me. It's a four-story, multi-use building in the industrial park. We went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The town board actually made amendments to the town code to even permit this use. The first floor of the building is supposed to be retail uses, coffee shops, things like that, with the three floors above it being office use. It's an existing industrial warehouse that's vacant, that's to be demolished. It's the corner of Kennedy Drive and Motor Parkway. It's significant. It's the entrance to our industrial park as you're coming in from the expressway. The architect and the owner are here. We're recommending approval with five conditions. They obtain applicable permits from Building Department. They need a road opening permit from the Highway Department for access to Kennedy Drive. They need tree preservation fencing along the perimeter, around any trees to be preserved. They need a highway work permit from DPW for improvements along Vanderbilt Motor Parkway. And the other condition pertains to the amendment that the board did. The first-floor counter-service restaurant uses shall not exceed 20% of the gross floor area pursuant to Section 32228 of the zoning ordinance. Again, the existing building is 41,350 square feet, and we'll be constructing a new 35,000-square-foot, four-story mixed-use building. The secret is supposed to happen this afternoon as well, and we're recommending approval, and the applicant's here in agreement.
Is that 20% of the gross floor area of the whole building?
Of the entire building, yes.
Is that enough for the applicant to cover what they needed to do?
Well, it's what the ordinance limits them to.
Do they need more? Any conversations with you? Were they okay with that?
No, they were good with that. We didn't want this turning into a shopping center, so.
Okay, very good. Yeah, before we go, I just want to go back to the first application. Just for clarifications, I know there was, you know, concerns for the residents over there, traffic safety, pedestrian safety. And one of the things we've done, the Highway Department has cleaned up the sidewalk on the east side of the street. And what the town's going to do, the Highway Department, we're gonna be installing a sidewalk on the north side of the road from the Ace Hardware down to, I think it's Margaret's Place, the street. So we'll be able to have pedestrians and be able to utilize sidewalk all the way down from town line all the way up to Smithtown Boulevard. And Matt's gonna be doing also a crosswalk there. It'll be noted so they can go from the north to the east side, or the western east side. Very good. We're also, on that, so the board knows, we are also gonna continue discussions with Legislator Kennedy and the county on future improvements of that intersection. So those discussions will be ongoing.
Peter, at Industrial Park, did you say they're going to put a food place in there, a restaurant or something?
The first floor will be counter-service type tenants.
Just counter-service?
Well, for the most part. I mean, I don't know if the applicant's permitted to say. Do you have any potential people you're thinking about on the?
We had some preliminary conversations with a few companies, more along the lines of franchise-type operations. But I think perhaps maybe a mix of, maybe some sit-down restaurants and some counter-operations. Nice.
Yeah, it's always good.
The building across the street on the south side in the town of Isle is a very similar situation. They've got offices on the second floor, but on the first floor, it's Dunkin' Donuts, Hurricane Wings, things like that.
It's Hurricane Wings.
This is the first application on the, since we changed height?
Yes.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Great application.
We also have, on the top, there's an outside deck, so we're trying to be, you know, very relevant to what people want to be out here, who want to work in today's department.
You could sit out there?
Sit out there, yes.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Hans, continue.
Next application, 1,000 Niskunsit Highway LLC, west side of Smithtown Bypass, south of Middle Country Road. This was formerly the Sixth Avenue Electronics Site where, what?
I couldn't hear you off that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we good?
Yeah.
This is the proposed Tesla Car Dealership. Now, they already had exemption approval for the facade renovations and the change of use from a retail shopping center to a motor vehicle showroom. However, they did not have approval for the site work. So this site plan is merely for the site work. Recommending approval with four conditions. That they obtain applicable permits from the Building Department, that they obtain a road opening permit from the Highway Department for access to South Hillside Avenue. They're doing a modification to the existing access. The third is about tree preservation fencing to the satisfaction of environmental or planning. And the fourth is that they not do any site work within the state right-of-way until they obtain their highway work permit from DOT. The applicant has agreed to these conditions, and we're recommending approval. Anything? Okay. And the last application is called Steel Forest LLC. This is the former Forest Labs building on Comac Road. Currently, you have Stony Brook Medical Centers in there, as well as Catholic Health Services. The building has been repurposed with about five major tenants in there. They have a need for additional parking, especially when Catholic Health Services gets more up and running there. So this is a parking expansion on the south side of the building. It's currently an undeveloped area. This will provide 234 additional parking stalls. Recommending approval with five conditions, applicable permits. The next two are dealing with SWIP review. And the fourth is about tree preservation. And then the fifth is that they must obtain the highway work permit from Suffolk County DPW.
Is that building full?
It's not full yet.
It's not yet?
No.
A little less space?
No, and that's why they need the additional parking.
Okay. Very good. I spoke to Mr. McCarthy this morning, so just for the edification to the rest of the board, COMAC is not going on today. It was due to, but.
They really tried to get that done.
That's fine, but Mr. McCarthy explained it, so maybe explain to the rest of the board.
It just, basically, is conditions regarding, because it's an old landfill site, engineering criteria that they just need to check with their engineers. It's all boilerplate stuff. It'll be on between now and the next meeting.
If they, if we need to move it before, we only have the one meeting in August, so if necessary, we'll call a special board meeting, and we'll get them underway.
I'd like to explain to them, we're ready to go. We're done. We're finished. We're ready to go. They have a board of health thing, and they just want to review the engineering criteria.
Okay.
We have another major application that's near-ready for approval, too, that's called TBG Apartments. That's the motel on the south side of Jericho Turnpike opposite Northgate Shopping Center. So that's proposed to be ninety apartments, and I believe they're getting a secret this afternoon.
Okay.
There's a resolution for it.
How close are they to site right now?
Well, once the secret is adopted, we'll be ready for the next meeting.
Well, if you need it early, let the supervisor's office know, and he'll say we'll call a special meeting for it.
Okay. I would try to do it the same day as COMAC, so if COMAC resolves everything, we'll do it at the same time.
Call a special meeting on that day.
Is that over there?
We'll do two special meetings. He said if you need it.
That's where the hotel was.
There was like a motor launcher, and then behind it was.
It's up on top of the hill.
On top of the hill, next to Tudor Time and Alcalma.
Oh, I'm thinking of a different one. There used to be the COMAC Inn. That's not it.
No.
It's still a little west.
Right.
It's up on the hill.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter. Okay. I think we have our first county renovation of a house, affordable workforce housing. So I asked Ms. Brown to come over and explain what they would like to do. The floor is yours, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Supervisor. Good morning, council members and supervisor. Back in October of 2017, the town board established a workforce housing policy in response to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. That means that if a subdivision comes in, or a condo complex, et cetera, if there are five or more lots or units, that's where the Affordable Workforce Housing Policy comes into play, where they have to add a number of affordable units. The builder contacted the Long Island Housing Partnership and asked them to run the lottery for the house that was going to be built. The income eligibility is based on 130% or less of the median household income on Long Island, and no more than 30% of their income can go to housing costs. The median household income on Long Island is $110,000. There is currently one house ready for a lottery. The house was built on Locust Drive in San Remo. It is a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath home, and it is going for $350,100. So there are 37 families on the list. So the Long Island Housing Partnership reached out to me as the community development person to ask if the town board would be interested in helping them with the actual lottery for this house. It would be very exciting. All 37 families usually show up, and it's like an old-fashioned lottery, where you pull numbers out of a bag, you know, whatever, and that is how they do the waiting list. So they'll start with the first person on the list, and they'll create it for 37 people, and they'll go down the list until they find a family that meets this criteria. So the town board would actually be helping that day to establish the list for an affordable unit. They were looking at either July 30th or 31st for this. They like to give at least two weeks' notice to the participants so that possibly, they could possibly be able to take off from work, and they would like to be able to hold it in the afternoon. So I'm just asking if you'd like to be involved, and, you know, if we could pick a date for this lottery.
I'm agreeable.
That, I think that'd be great. I just have to look at my schedule.
Okay, so.
Kelly, how does this come about, that, for this one house? Was it a, was it a house that was demolished?
No, this is a brand-new house.
So was it a lot? Had it, the county bought a lot?
No, no, no. The builder bought a lot.
The builder bought?
Sometimes they build the house within the community that they're building in. But since this community had houses that were much bigger and more expensive, they didn't want to put, you know, a house in there that looked, you know, not up to snuff as the other houses that were in that neighborhood. So they bought a separate piece of property, and they built a brand-new house. And now this is the house. They have to give, you know, a house. It doesn't mean that it has to be in the same subdivision. It can be somewhere else.
So.
So that's what the builder did.
So once they went over a certain amount of units in their subdivision, plus of the county, they had to have a.
Yes, they, and it doesn't have to be in the subdivision. It can be somewhere else in the town, but it has to be workforce. This is workforce housing. And again, the price is, you know, $350,000. It's not, it's not cheap.
It's not cheap. What are the taxes?
You know, I don't know what the taxes will be, you know, but, you know, three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath, that's fantastic. So.
Yeah. I think we'd all be interested, correct?
Absolutely.
So.
I guess you'll get back to me maybe the next day or so. Let me know what works for you?
Yep. We'll give you some dates and then.
And just for your information, I just wanted to hand out the policy to you so that you would have it. So I will get in touch with the Long Island Housing Partnership, let them know that it is a go, and they're very excited to work with us. There will be more coming down the road from Beachwood that's building on 111. Actually, there will be seven affordable units in that complex.
Seven. They're starting at $600,000.
Yes.
Well, you have the median income, $115,000.
You know.
That's what it's based on.
That's what it's based on. Then it's 120% of that, so it can be a little more than the median. But there will be seven units in that complex.
Are they gonna do it, Housing Partnership, same way?
Yes. They prob, I don't know if they will. They probably will. That's one of the most popular ones.
With seven units in there.
That they contract with and has done this before. So I would be coming back to you again at that point. I think they really would like the town board to be involved, you know, that we're now doing, you know, affordable workforce housing, and do another lottery at that point when that becomes available.
Were they the contractor that built this home that's going up either on the 30th or 31st, Beachwood?
No, no. Beachwood, that's the condos that are going up right now.
Right.
That will eventually have seven.
Yeah, but this, this house, different builder.
Different builder, totally.
That home was part of, the subdivision's actually on Core Road in Kings Park.
Yeah.
Right. Oh, okay.
And so rather than him build a smaller home next to these larger homes in the subdivision, he opted to do one nearby on Baker Lot.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, wouldn't it, the subdivision, I think it was seven, seven or eight?
I believe so.
That subdivision, a smaller house in that subdivision would have not been in character with that neighborhood.
No.
Boom, 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 boom.
They chose another, an area which is, which is worse.
Kelly, are you talking about another one where you have to give up six or seven affordable houses?
There will be seven. There'll be a percentage, yes. And so it ends up being seven.
Does councilmen say they were selling, there would be $600,000 for the affordable house?
No, 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 no. That's what they.
That's the price Beachwood has those set at.
Yes.
So the affordable would be like, the extra price?
Somewhere maybe in the high threes, maybe four. We don't exactly know yet. You know, they also will be a little bit smaller than the other units. So they will have to figure that out. But the units in that complex are going, you know, from six into the sevens.
Up to nine.
Up to nine.
I looked. Out of my price range.
So, but down the road, we will have seven more that are workforce housing.
That's very nice, Kelly.
Yeah. Kelly, thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
And we'll get back, you get us those dates, just send an email for those dates, and then we'll.
You got it. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last for me, the Dr. Blues concert. We've agreed to try that out. I hear that I have not been able to get there, but that the concerts at Long Beach are getting more popular every week.
I will tell you that.
And that's wonderful.
They're great. I've been to them. They're great. People come from all over. I've got, right, I've got photos.
That's great.
It's just.
So we're gonna, we've agreed to try that. I worked with the town attorney. He wants to charge $10 per person coming in. That's how he works his operation. Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, he's agreed to give us $2 of every $10. And that should sufficiently cover our cost on what we have to do.
Sounds good.
And then we'll try it in September. I think he changed the date, correct?
I think it's.
Later in September?
Third week in September.
Right, okay. So we'll try that. We'll take, we'll make an agreement with him through the attorney's office, and then, and that'll cover our cost on what we have to do as far as public safety and parks, buildings, and grounds, and then, and then we can adjust it next year if they want to come back, and we want to have them back.
So with a weekend, a weekend?
It's just, it's a, yeah.
Friday and Saturday, or?
One, one.
I believe it's Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday, yeah.
At night?
It's throughout the day.
So we'll do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have, other than executive session matters, so I have executive session. Cinderella?
I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to, I know we're on camera, so I just want to let people know. It's a very special lady, Tara Joy Bonacera, that had passed away a couple of weeks ago, very suddenly during an operation. She, she's on social media a lot, and she has paid attention to all the bullying that goes on, harassment that goes on with the adults. And it was something that she worked very, really hard to do, her page with Smithtown Moms and Friends, to remove all of that in our town. She did a great job, and I was just about to volunteer, have her volunteer with me and get together on some, some work in Smithtown when it comes to, you know, working on kindness and working on, you know, all this, all this kind of craziness to go away on social media. And unfortunately, she had passed away. She's very well-known, and I just want to let everyone know that knows her that there's gonna be a candlelight vigil at the, at Long Beach. There's a cut-through to the left of the recre, the, I'm sorry, the concession stand. And they're gonna meet there at 6 o'clock on Saturday, the 21st, for a candlelight vigil, balloons. And they're gonna be able, everyone that has, she has touched, she has touched literally thousands of people, so I don't know what's gonna happen. I've notified our parks department. And so they're, they'll be there, and so will public safety. And so I'm just letting everyone know. You're welcome to come. If you do come, you have to mention to the booth that if you don't live in Smithtown, that you're there for Tara Joy. And no need to bring a candle, because there'll be LED candles given out to everybody. So that's, that's one thing. And then the next thing, I just want to save the date right now, and I'm pretty sure at the end of next week we'll have final details, but save the date for a prostate screening at Niskunsit Fire Department that Councilman Loman and I are putting together. So the Niskunsit Fire Department was nice enough to say we could use their, their room upstairs. And, and also a Dr. Harrington, wonderful doctor, a local doctor that is willing to take his time out and be there for helping with the testing. So that'll be, that's just to save the date, which is September 12th, between 11:00 and 1:00. And that'll be on our website and social media next week, though, with more details. I just, there's also a pizza box project that the Youth Bureau does every, I wouldn't say, I'm not sure, I think every four months, but it's a wonderful thing for children. So if anybody goes on to the Youth Bureau Facebook page or our website, you get your kids involved with the Pizza Box Project. It's a great thing to do. And then that's it. I did want to ask, you said you only have executive session, but I wanted you to just talk about the parks real quick, because I have two young kids, and I got, I always get the moms asking me about our parks. So I do live in Kings Park, and so I know these other parks that were just redone are not in Kings Park. So I want, if you could just explain more about these parks, maybe get some Kings Park moms and dads to go over there.
Yeah, it is, you know, the town undertook a big initiative with upgrading all our parks and beaches that haven't really been touched in 25, 30 years. And the first parks to be addressed were three. Two in St. James, one in Niskunsit, Gibbs Pond Road Park. Then we had the Mauritius Road Park on Mauritius Road in Kings Park, in St. James. And then also, we had the Gibbs Pond, Gainer Park in St. James as well. Where both of the, all three of those projects came in under budget. Over $62,000 was saved. So some of those monies we're going to use to address some of the other parks that haven't been touched in a long time, such as Maple Avenue Park. We're gonna be putting some money in there, as well as Flint Field, which we're going to be undertaking a big project there next year to completely renovate that park. And we're also gonna be addressing Memorial Park in Kings Park as well. Trying to do the same things we've done in the three other parks, and that's upgrade the children's area, put safety matting down, and just try and beautify those areas, you know, because it hasn't been done in a long time. So there's an RFP that went out. We're gonna be hopefully awarding this bid for Kings Park, which is for the engineering, landscaping, design of that project. It's a sizable project that we're looking at there, as we all know. So hopefully, next year, we're gonna have a lot more improvements into our parks and our beaches. And then we're gonna be doing the same thing in the future, too, with the Marina, the Smithtown Marina. That is in, you know, dire need of work down there. So those are some of the larger projects that'll be coming into 2019 and certainly 2020.
One that supervisor and I worked on last week was Callahan's Beach. That's gonna get the last, that's the only hamlet on the west end of town that doesn't have a water park. It's gonna get a water park. It's gonna get a completely covered area. It's gonna get all new. And that's in conjunction with, you know, the cell tower is gonna be there. So they'll be paying for a major share of that, so the taxpayers don't have to.
Right. Thank you. I forgot about that one. That's the big one. Well, that's the newest one. So we have to do that in conjunction, as Mr. McCarthy said, in, to comply with the installation of the cell tower there. So we'll get some funding for them. So all those projects worked out well. Very good. If you haven't seen them, folks, go, go take a look at them. They come out great.
All the parks are beautiful. You've gotta visit. These parks are absolutely beautiful. I can't wait to see the rest of them. And then the last thing, I'm gonna have to move to our next work session, but I did put it on there, so I'll just explain. Training life guts to rescue for overdose victims. Huntington does this now. I was trying to find a room before this meeting to have a meeting with somebody in Huntington to really go over all of this, so I can have a better understanding of how they got there. So hopefully, I could put that, I could speak about that in the next work session.
Is that a knock-in kind of thing?
Yeah.
Very good. All set?
Yeah.
Stowe?
I'm set.
You're set? Mr. McCarthy?
All good.
Okay.
Better than that.
Thank you very much for coming. Mr. McCarthy, great to see you, as always.
Never better.
Thank you for coming to visit us. And I move to go into executive.
Second.
All a favor? I move to close the executive session.
Second.
All a favor?
Aye.
And I move to close the work session.
Second.
All a favor?
Aye.
All a favor?
Aye.